It's February 11th. Carl, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Welcome to our regular town board meeting for the town of Rhinebeck. Would everybody please stand for the mic?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joanie, do we have to approve any prior minutes?
No.
We'll just do that at the next meeting?
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna go out of order a little bit tonight because we've got people here who need to be out, but our first is going to be a presentation from Steve Hartnett and our, from the New York State Office of Real Property Taxation, our assessor, Matt Savia, our deputy assessor, Jennifer Munn, and Steve Beckio Tyler. This is regarding disclosures that are being mailed out tomorrow for our townwide reassessment and evaluation project. And part of what we're going to talk tonight is the shift analysis, correct?
Correct.
How do you want to start out, Jennifer? You want, oh, here's a slide presentation.
I think I'll start now. And I'll go through the majority of the presentation.
Thank you. This is Steve Beckio, who's been with us for, geez, what, almost a year and a half in our office diligently collecting data and building all of our modules for every property and creating neighborhoods and balances within those modules so that we can continue on a yearly reassessment project to not only regain our 100% market value evaluation, but to maintain it going on. So thanks, Steve from Tyler.
Okay. So let's reprise where we are thus far. Some of you may have attended the first presentation that we gave before this project got started, but we'll review what we've done thus far before Steve gives his presentation.
Other Steve. The other Steve.
The other Steve. Steve Hartnett. Yeah. So of course, as Elizabeth said, they contracted with our firm to assist the assessor with your reassessment project for this year. And as part of the evaluation, all properties within the town were, this is a term we use, measured and listed. A data collector went out, they knocked on the door. If no one was home, they measured all the structures on the property. If someone was home, they asked about interior information at the door and then measured all of the structures on the property. After that, things called data mailers or property description reports were mailed to each residential parcel. This gave the taxpayer the opportunity to review and correct data on the plail for their property. Tyler staff then visited any property where there was a significant discrepancy. So if we got a data mailer back from you and we had 1,500 square feet and you said that there was 1,000 square, we would have called you, asked to come out, remeasure the property, ascertain where the discrepancy occurred. Other than that, if it was a change of bedrooms or bathrooms, it would be a change that we would make according to your change. This is a copy of the property description report. I don't think that you'd be able to read it from there, but it gives the property ID, the address, and some basic, fundamental building information that we use for evaluation, the building style, the exterior wall material, the basement type, the type of heat, the type of fuel, whether or not there's central air, the year built, the square foot living area, number of bedrooms, number of full baths, number of half baths, number of fireplaces, finished basement area or finished rec room. And there may have been garage information on the one that we mailed. This is one from Amerinect, New York. So some of them are different depending on the requirements of the particular project, but essentially, this is what you got in your data mailer. And this is what you were asked to confirm or correct, as the case may be. So the first step for us in establishing values is to review properties that are sold. This is how you determine the value of anything. What do similar things sell for? So the review consists of both verification of sale terms as well as the property data, such as the items that we just looked at, square foot living area, location, bedrooms, bathrooms. The sale terms, we don't know too much about the sale terms. There's a document, an equalization document, that I filled out by the attorneys to a transaction. And it's supposed to convey to the assessor whether it was an arms-length transaction, that is, there was no, there weren't related parties involved, whether or not there was any personal property, the number of parcels involved, if it was a multi-parsel sale, whether there was any business interest involved. I don't think it's religiously looked out after by the attorneys to the transaction. Most of them either say yes or no, it's an arms-length transaction, and that's it. And that's the most we have to work with. We don't get to see the contract and the details of the contract. But this is the form that most assessors rely on. In the town of Rhinebeck, there were, and this includes the village, 268 sales suitable for use for residential modeling occurring at the time period of January 1st, 2016 through, would be June 30th, 2019. And the timeframe represents the market we're attempting to capture in our valuation for each property. This is the median sale price. In the village of Rhinebeck, 92 sales. The median sale price, $427,500. For the town, 176 sales. The median sale price, $388,250,000. And overall, when you combine the town and the village, 268 sales, the median sale price is $402,500. Initially in this presentation, we started out with an average sale price. But it's misleading because you have extremes in this town. In the village, it was $485,000. In the town, it was $670,000. But you have town, town sales of 9.5 million, 6.5 million. There are none of these very high sales that pull the average up, but don't necessarily represent what you would think of as properties in the town. And the median does give you an indication that it represents more or less. If you were talking about sales in the town, except for the very high-end properties, this would be a more representative number than 670,000. So using these recent sales, and we're going back three years, as a guide, we develop computerized models that predict current market value using the data on file for each property. For residential properties, there are three models: a cost model, a sales comparison model, and a manual model estimate. Manual model is a term that's used within the system. It's really a statistical model. It's a regression model. It's a statistically derived model. During the final valuation review, the three approaches are considered, and the one that best predicts the market value is selected. If there are adequate comparables, the sales comparable approach is preferred approach. It was the approach used for approximately 90% of residential, non-condo properties. The condo properties are valued like commercial apartments. That's the law in New York. So I'm gonna skip this because we're, we'll discuss that portion of this presentation when we get to the hearings themselves. So land value is used by all approaches: cost, market, and income. For residential properties, the land is allocated between building site and residual or remaining acres. This is determined more or less by zoning. Land values were developed from sales, from the specific neighborhood being valued. Land sales, when available, were improved sales if there were no vacant lot sales. So in the village, for instance, there were certain areas where we had a fair number of vacant sales, more than we normally encounter in a densely developed area. But in the town, although there were land sales, the variation in the number of acres and the location makes it difficult to determine precisely what lot value should be. So we also use something called a residual approach. It's a type of allocation. You impute a cost to the structures on the property for those properties that have sold. You depreciate them, and you subtract that from the sales price, and you infer a site value. And you use that approach and test it against the actual vacant sales that have occurred. And if it were to the fact that land value were required for those improved properties that were valuing, we probably wouldn't have a land value. Because when people go out and they buy a property, an improved property, they don't make that division in their own mind. There's a certain asking price for the property. They want the property. Will they pay for it? But they're not thinking, what's the land? What's the improvement? What's the total? They're just thinking whether it's worthwhile, whether they want the property. So the cost approach estimates what it would cost to build a replacement structure of the same quality amenities and functionality. And this replacement cost is depreciated or reduced to reflect the age and condition of the structure. Nearly every component listed on the property card contributes to the replacement cost. Other features would include fireplaces and rec rooms and basements, garages, decks, porches, et cetera, called additions. They add value relative to their depreciated replacement cost. This is an example of what a cost sheet looks like. It's a detailed breakdown of every component that's on the property record card, that has been assigned cost, replacement cost, new, the depreciation, and the depreciated cost. We prefer the market approach, and that estimates the contributory value of various components to the price for which a property sold. The market may not recognize a certain component, or may value it at a different level than their replacement cost. The components determined affect value will differ depending on the location, but include things like the school district, this is often reflected in neighborhood, age, condition, basement type, garage, whether it's attached or detached, other buildings, sheds or barns, number of bathrooms, central air conditioning, living area, building style, we talked about basement, finished basement or not, in-ground pools, living units. This is our property class is important. We compare single-family homes to single-family homes, two-family to two-family, three-family to three-family. It's the case here in Rhinebeck that outside of the village, and even within the village, there aren't enough multifamily sales not to, we're not able to stay within the property class. There may be three families subjects in the village, and there were no three-family sales, so we had to use two-family sales. Quality grade, that's the quality of construction, the workmanship, the materials involved, basement garages, deck area, land, porch area, view is a qualitative factor which is built into the land, if it can be ascertained. So these are the kind of things, these elements, help direct us to determine how we should value these properties. Unlike single property appraisal, mass appraisal uses a mathematical formula to calculate how comparable the sale is to the subject. The higher the number, the less comparable the sale is. The computer selects the five lowest numbers with the three best views to value the subject. This is a point system that's assigned to all of the sales. So for any given subject, it's looking to get that sale that is most like the subject with respect to these property characteristics that we're looking at. And you can only use the sales that are there. So you don't have situations in this town where you have a lot of the same style properties that sold. Oftentimes, you'd have to go outside of that particular style if you want to stay within the neighborhood. That's less true in the village than it is the town. So only valid sales between January 1st, 2016, July 1st, 2019 were used for comparables. Location is determined by the neighborhood assignment, so a similar property three streets away will be rated as an equal location to the one on the same street. This is more appropriate for the village here, but there are streets for which there aren't enough sales to prevent you from going to other streets. And it's typical in appraisals, even bank appraisals that I've seen used here in the town, for the appraiser to even go outside of the town to buy a, like, Clinton. We don't do that. We stay within the town of Rhinebeck. Foreclosures, family sales of properties that have significantly changed since the sale were not used as comparables. The following components were used to determine comparability. This is, these are the elements that are used in the weighting scheme, the scoring scheme that are used to determine the order in which comparables occur. This computerized system that we use looks at every sale, all 268 sales, as a potential comparable, and it assigns a point score to each one of them. And later, we'll see a comparable sales document, and it'll show the first five comparables that were chosen. And we don't go beyond that, although we have the opportunity to go beyond that if we think there are better comps beyond it. But the position of those five is determined by this point score, the lowest five point scores being the five comparables that show up on this comp sheet. So the components are age, finished basement area, land size, neighborhood, number of bathrooms, condition, quality grade, building style, story height, living units, living units insofar as they determine property class. We'll get to this later. So you're about to receive a disclosure notice. We call it an impact notice. How does the reassessment impact or affect me? The disclosure notice will be mailed to all property owners the week of the 12th, that's this week. If property owners feel the preliminary 2020 assessment does not accurately reflect market values of July 1st, 2019, property owners or their representatives may contact Tyler to schedule an informal review. Informal review meetings generally take 15 to 20 minutes and are by appointment only. The notice is mailed with a letter explaining how to understand the notice and what to do if you disagree with the assessment. There are copies of that cover letter here on this table next to the door, if you'd like to look at one. And this is that letter. You want me to read this to you, or would you like to look at it?
No, thanks.
You don't need to hear all of this, right? Pretty straightforward. This is the notice itself. What the notice gives you is your prior value, last year's value. The 2019 values were at 87% of full value. So what this document does is convert that assessment to 100% value so that you can compare the 100% today to what the 2019 value would be at 100%. Remember, you haven't done a reassessment here since, well, I think it was 2011 was the last time that they maintained
'04, Doc?
Year-to-year full values.
When was the last year?
2011. From 2012 to the present, any changes to assessment were a reflection of changes in inventory, new construction, demolition, splits. But all of those changes were based on the old standard, the standard that you had as of the end of 2011. And then your new value. So you get to compare market value 2019 to market value today. And then there's the tax impact. What you paid for county, town, and school taxes in 2019, based on that 2019 assessment, and the preliminary 2020 taxable assessed value, and what you would have paid with the new value had the new value been the value last year with last year's budget. It either represents an increase or a decrease, or pretty much the same. If you went up by more than the average increase, you could expect to pay a greater share than you did previously. If you went up by less than the average increase, you would expect to pay less of a share than you did. And if you went up or didn't go up at all, you would pay the same share. And I emphasize the idea of share, the concept of share, because this is really what the assessor does. He allocates shares. It's shares of the budget, the amount of money to be raised by the property tax. And so each assessment is a share of the total of all assessments. And whatever that share is, is your share of the taxes. If your assessment is 1% of the taxable assessed value, you're gonna pay for 1% of what has to be raised. I'm not gonna discuss exemptions here because that changes the equation somewhat, but you get the idea. So it's possible to see an increase in value, but a decrease in share.
The total assessed value for the three districts was there?
For this particular property, the total is, I think it's...
No, no, no. I'm trying to see it.
The county, town, and school.
The county, town, and school is just the assessed value for those districts.
For the entire district.
There are no fire districts in here. The special districts are not included in here.
I understand, but the county, and town, and school are all there.
Yes, they are. And those represent them. And you can infer from this what would be the case for all of the special districts. Should here have an increase in these districts, you would have an increase in the special district.
I understand.
So existing exemptions will be listed, but owners must contact the town with any questions regarding exemptions. The 2020 market value is what Tyler will discuss in an informal review meeting. We'll not discuss exemptions or taxes. And the taxes are an estimate of what would happen with your current tax bill using the new assessment if the old budget prevailed, if you were using the old budget to determine your rate. This is not an estimate of your 2020 tax bill. The property owners can schedule an appointment online with TylerTech.com, or they can call Tyler at this number once they receive their letters. Property owners must call Tyler Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on or before February 21st to schedule an appointment. Be sure to have your notice with you when you call. Information on the notice is required. The phone lines may be busy for the first few days, but will lighten up by the second week. And owners must inform Tyler phone operators of all properties they own and wish to discuss at the time they schedule their meeting, or if they'll have someone else represent Informal meetings generally take 15 minutes. We assign 15 minutes for residential parcels, 20 minutes for commercial. Property owners will have the opportunity to review the data Tyler used to determine the assessment. Assigned letter of authorization from the property owners required for all representatives in order to discuss the property. Only properties that have been scheduled for an appointment will be discussed. And Tyler will only discuss full market value, will not discuss the repeated taxes or exemptions. Informal reviews do not require any specific or special... Special from the property owner. While not required photos, recent appraisal, or other documentation are welcome, it's best to provide a copy of this documentation for Tyler to retain for review. And commercial property owners are encouraged to provide income expense information. This is rental income and expense, not business income and expenses. If owners can't attend an informal review meeting, correspondence may be sent to Tyler Technologies at the address on the bottom of the notice, postmarked no later than March 5, 5, 2020, and it'll be treated like an informal hearing. So let's back up, show you what you would be looking at. So during the meeting, you'll get the chance to see your property record card. This card contains the information on record for your property that was used to estimate the assessed value. It looks like this. This is the New York State Real Property System Property Record Card. Site value, land information. On the other side, there's the building information and improvement section. There's no sketch in the New York State system. We have a separate sketch program, and that'll be provided for. We talked about all of these, but I do want you to see that. Here's the comp sheet. This happens to be not from this town, but from another town. The subject happens to be a raised ranch. There were lots of raised ranches available for this particular, for this particular So these properties are arrayed from most comparable to least comparable. These are the first five that were selected based on their point score. But if you were to open this up, you could see every sale available for comparability. And it could go out, in this particular town, there were 300 and some sales available. There's the date of the sale, the sale price, the time adjustment. Because we go back three years, we use something called market conditions in a Fannie Mae appraisal, overtime, the average sale price for the town, increase, decrease, what was that increase or decrease, and that's reflected in that time adjustment. That time-adjusted sale price is then adjusted by the differences assigned to those property components that have a value contribution. And that results in an adjusted sale price. So that's what your property would look like, adjusting for the differences between the property that sold and yourself. If the property that sold has more square footage than you and everything else is equal, then an adjustment is made down for the fact that you have less square footage than they do. So you could expect to see an adjusted sale price lower than the actual sale price to reflect the fact that you had fewer square feet than the sale did. On the other hand, if you had more square footage than the sale property, you would expect the adjusted sale price to be greater than the actual sale price to reflect the fact that you have more square footage than the property that sold. Okay. So I think we're ready for Steve Hartnett. And there are, I think, the first few.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. There you go, right there.
Thank you. As I introduce, my name is Steve Hartnett. I'm from the Office of Real Property Tax, a unit within the Department of Tax and Finance in New York State. My first observation is I want to commend the supervisor and the town board for undertaking this reassessment project. It was a big undertaking. Our North Star, if you will, is Real Property Tax Hall 305. In short, it says all real property must be assessed at a uniform percent of value. It's all about assessment equity, and that was the whole goal of this project. And I think when we review the tables, we'll see some of the tax shifts. We're getting big picture tonight in terms of what the tax shifts are, and we'll see that indeed, there were shifts. So that prior to the project, there were some equity issues, and now after the project, equity has hopefully been restored and, again, to be commended. And also a shout-out to the assessor, to the vendor, and the county, for that matter, County Real Property Tax. It's a real team effort. It was a pleasure from the state's perspective to work with all three parties, and it was, like I say, a real collective team effort. So as Steve... So as Steve outlined, what we're trying to do, and the individual notice that you'll receive, those will go out tomorrow, what we're trying to present here is to present an apples-to-apples comparison. So if these assessments, the new assessments, had been in place, we use last year's levies, so the school from 2019, the most recent county-town extension in January of 2020. We take those levies, those budgets, use the new assessments, and calculate what the effect would have been of those new assessments. And that's the presentation you're going to get on an individual basis, starting tomorrow in the mail. This first table that you see here is what we call an inter-class shift analysis. It's done by percent change in taxes. So within the major types of properties, so within the farm class, the big class, of course, the residential, the commercial class, we're showing three categories, four categories, five categories, excuse me. The middle column represents what we would say is no change. So effectively, even as a result of a new assessment, there's a certain percentage of properties that would see effectively no change in taxes. Those, you might assume, were equitably assessed before and after. The first two columns represent properties that will see a decrease in their taxes. Again, this is hypothetically based on last year's budgets. We make no projections about what's going to occur to future budgets, future exemptions, et cetera. But again, a pure apples-to-apples comparison, we're trying to illustrate that a certain percent will go into the details of what they are, would have seen a decrease if the new assessment's been in place. And conversely, there's a certain percentage of properties that would see an increase. Let's bottom line it for you. All major types of property, farm, residential, condominium, vacant, commercial, break to the bottom line, all properties considered. The first two columns represent less than, a decrease of more than 10% in taxes if the new assessments had been in place. Forty, almost 41% of all properties, based on the new assessments, would see, would have seen a reduction in their tax liability had the new assessments been in place last year. 41% overall. What we call the no-change column, 32%. And then, on the upside, about 27, 27 and 1/4% of all properties, had the new assessments been in place with last year's levies, would see, would have seen, an increase in taxes. What does that tell us right away? Had these numbers all been in the center column, we could have said, well, it's great that we did the reassessment, we got the inventory more current, that was all commendable, but you know what? There was a good degree of equity that existed prior. This tells a different story. There wasn't equity in prior role. And the folks that analyzed it beforehand knew that. They made the recommendation to do the reassessment. We didn't know the exact shift analysis, but this shift, like I said, 40% had these new assessments been in place, would have seen a decrease in their taxes. 27% would have seen an increase in their taxes. What does that also tell us? It tells us that these folks that are seeing the decrease were essentially subsidizing the folks that are going to now see, again, a comparison of last year's budgets, an increase in taxes. So equity has been restored, and that's commendable. This is in a percent basis. Another way to look at this, and this is what you'll see on your individual form, and it may be more meaningful than just talking in broad percent terms, is a dollar comparison. And here we have more columns, but I'm still going to take the same approach and talk about a decrease of more than $300, a plus or minus change of $300, what I would call a no change, and then a greater than $300 increase in taxes had these new assessments been in place. Again, this is including county, town, and school taxes. Again, we'll start bottom line, and then we'll go back up. We'll talk about significant classes, the residential class, the commercial class. But again, overall, 47.4%, 47 and 1/2% would have seen a more than $300 decrease in taxes had the new assessments been in place. 20% would have seen a plus or minus $300 change. Again, this is county, town, and school, all taxes, excluding special districts. And then, the remaining percent, I didn't do the math, looks like 32% would see a more than $300 increase in taxes. That's overall, all major types of property. Residentially, a similar tale. 14% of the residential class, plus or minus $300. But on the big end, more than 31% of residential properties, had these new assessments been in place with last year's budgets, would have seen more than a $1,000 decrease in their tax liability. On the extreme other end, in the residential class, 23% for 500 properties, 580 properties, would have seen more than a $1,000 increase in their tax liability had these new assessments been in place last year. Here's, again, tells a tale, tells a tale of what to expect, that there is going to be some tax shifting. It tells a tale that there was an equity prior to this being done. And so it was all for a good cause. You'll get the individual notices in the mail. One more slide. The other thing we like to look at is, was there any significant tax shift between classes? Sometimes what you'll find in a municipality that has a large commercial class, they may have been over-assessed, and then when everybody's established, because again, the North Star, the guiding principle is equity. All property must be assessed at a uniform percent of value. Commercial, vacant, residential. Sometimes what you find is that the commercial class was overpaying, and that as a result of the reassessment, there's a shift between classes. The details of this table tell us that no, that was not the case. Residentially, prior, they paid 77.29%. Had the new assessments been in place, you couldn't get it more exactly. 77.28% had the new assessments. So there wasn't a shift into the residential class, and that's a good thing. Commercially, similarly, 10.6% was the share prior to the old assessments, 10.45% had the new assessments been in place. That's good news. There wasn't this shift between classes. So the inequity existed within the classes. You've addressed it, is to be, again, to be commended. My last advice, and again, I'm sure if you want to ask questions to the vendor or myself, but avail yourself, take time to read through the notice, avail yourself to the informal opportunity to meet with the vendor, to bring any information, you have to bear an appraisal, condition issues. Make a judgment. Most folks have a sense of what the value of their home is. And take a look at what the estimate is, if you have got questions. Meet with the vendor, come, find out how the value is derived. But make a judgment based on the assessment that you see, and whether that seems reasonable or not, and then move on from there. But again, my thanks, my thanks to the vendor and the assessor. It's been a great effort, it's been a long haul, a year and a half or so. And whatever we can do from here in the state, we're happy to continue to support.
Steve, both Steves, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from any of the board members? The assessors will be here to answer your questions. I am very proud of us for doing this. Sort of proves what we knew, that there was a lot of inept tax assessment inequity within our residential class. Thank you all, it's been a pleasure having Tyler here, and we look forward to finishing this up. We're going to go into our next agenda item. Quickly, we have our county legislator here, and they know you have to get to the village meeting, and then the clicker meeting, so it's good to see you.
Hi. All right, let's find my place here. Sorry, I had it grabbed, all this notes. While I find it, the room looks amazing. Congratulations on the move. So there are a couple things that have been going on in the legislature since I've seen you, and I'm really happy to be here tonight, because I know I miss you a lot on Monday nights, because I have legislature. We had session last night, and the main thing that I'm working on is a proposal to extend, they're called line-of-duty benefits, or 207(c)(2) benefits to probation officers. You may have heard about this, maybe getting a little bit of press. There was a horrific dog attack on one of our probation officers, and it sort of highlighted the fact that those peace officers, unlike firemen and police officers, corrections officers do not receive the same benefits during a time of injury and recovering from that. So I co-sponsored legislation that was not brought forth to the floor to extend those benefits to those officers. We had quite a few of them come speak to us last night during public comment. They've been there before, and so just to let you all know, I'm very behind extending those benefits to those officers, and I will continue working on that. And there's a bunch of information on my Facebook page, including an article that News 12 out of Westchester did, which has some interesting information on that. The other thing is that Ryan Beck, and thank you all, because you've been the ones doing your work, have been working really hard under the supervisor's leadership to prevent the, to work with Senior Hudson to fight the Amtrak proposal, to fence access points to our river. And I was able to support that effort by circulating a letter to the legislature, which I'm delighted to say all 25 of my colleagues signed on to. Encouraging residents, there was a period of, a comment period in January, so encouraging residents to do that. And I still encourage people to look on the Senior Hudson website, make yourself aware of what's been going on. And again, I thank Ryan Beck, who's been a leader, obviously, in doing that. But I'm glad to lend my support and have the legislature do that. Other things that are coming up, I mean, obviously, you're all hearing an awful lot about bail reform. I am, I am still a supporter of bail reform. I'm also a supporter of any improvements and clarifications that need to be made to the law. I'm happy to speak with anybody who has questions about that. My caucus will be circulating a petition in support of bail reform, and I can direct you to that if you're interested. And I think that's largely what's been happening. So if you all have any questions...
Brendan, why didn't the line-of-duty, the 207(c)(2) line-of-duty benefits make it to the floor?
The chairman declined to put it on the agenda, offering a variety of reasons. There's some procedural reasons, but my understanding and the research we did in developing the legislation indicated that the resolution we were creating would be an appropriate way to seek those benefits. And I'm hoping, it was a very, very tough and touching meeting last night with the comments, including Michelle File, who was the officer attacked by two Great Danes, she almost lost her life. And so it was tough stuff to hear, and I'm hoping that we'll get some more movement as we continue the conversation.
Does the chair, this is the chair of the legislature's, Greg Palmer, does he control the agenda?
Yes.
So he has, he has...
This is actually a really interesting question, because another thing that we worked on, it being January and February right now, is the clarifications of the rules of legislative procedure.
You hear any board member can put anything on the agenda. It's not like that in the county?
No, it's not, it's at the chair's discretion. And we pushed, my colleagues and I, last night, you know, I, we pushed for an amendment to the rules of the Dutchess County Legislature that would allow all resolutions to be put forth for discussion, for debate, for research, so that at least it would be on record, and so the public would be aware, instead of having to hear from me when things don't make it, and other legislators, you know, I'm not the only one. And this is on both sides of the aisle, we're not talking about a particular political party.
It's just at the discretion of the chair.
It's at the discretion of the chair, but that request was voted down last night. So again, the chair of the legislature will continue to control the agenda, which I wish were a different way. I think it hampers, it hampers discussion, and it hampers the public's... So anyway, but, so 207(c), you will not see it on the agenda, but you'll be, you'll probably see it in the newspapers, it's been around, and I am strongly, strongly behind getting those benefits. And again, even if things are not put forth on the agenda, I will continue to try and tell you...
Thank you, thanks, Brendan.
You're very, very welcome. Well, thank you all, I'm sorry, I have two more meetings.
I think the next, we have a discussion items. Chris Shale is here to discuss with us, or continue the discussion, on the Wells Manor pilot request.
Yes, thank you, members of that board, and this is John Perico. He's with the project, and he's probably a better person to speak to.
What's John's last name again?
Perico.
And what, are you representing?
Foundation housing, who represents?
And you're the, you're looking to purchase Wells Manor from Northerner Dutchess Hospital?
Yes, a affiliate of theirs.
So John was here last time, and made a presentation about the project. So I think we're here to answer further questions now that you've had an opportunity to consider the request and take a little time to think about it and read it.
Yeah. I guess, we have a couple of questions. I know that you're asking for a 40-year pilot, but you have a 20-year mortgage.
No, that's incorrect, it's a 30-year mortgage, or amortization period's for 30 years. We sent them a letter from our lender. The half contract is going to be extended for 20 years, which is the maximum allowable.
But you're asking for a 40-year pilot?
Yes.
Why is that?
Just for future preservation of the property. The reason why we like to tie that is for future financing, so we wouldn't be back in here doing it again.
Why do you need a pilot?
Because it's not a pilot.
Oh, sorry.
It's an exemption.
Why do you need a, so you want to be 100% tax exempt?
Yes.
Why?
Currently, the property is exempt. Our underwriting and rehab that we want to do to the property is assuming that exemption would stay in place as the property can be continued for. I think the exemption today goes to about 2025. And we're asking for, as consideration, as our acquisition, to extend that pilot, so that we can go in and fix up the property. I don't know if any of you guys have seen the property, but it is starting to fall apart. I was there today with our general contractor. We're going over the scope, and there's a lot of needs at the property.
What is the sale price on the property?
Eight million dollars.
So the hospital is selling it to Perico for eight million dollars?
No.
Foundation housing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we're a non-for-profit, and we are buying it with debt and equity that we're putting into the property. The property was put on the market by a national broker. It was a competitive process. I can't say this for sure, but I think we weren't the highest price, but the seller decided to sell to us because they knew it would be good owner, operator, and maintain the portability of the property. There's other groups out there that would be converting the property to market rate. The HUD subsidy expires in 2022. At that time, if it's not renewed, the tenants would receive their subsidy going forward, and you know, a potential owner could convert it to market.
This is Section 8 housing?
Correct, elderly section.
I think I saw someplace in my notes today, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't looked it up again, but I think I saw that it actually will come due, the new financing, if you're able to place it, would come due in, it was even less than 20 years, like 12 years or something like that, is that right?
Yeah, Fannie Mae only does short-term financing, but 30-year amortization period with a full move. And then we would go and do, put new financing at that time.
Here's my question. It seems to me inevitable that your financing, whoever is the financing agency, is going to require that the property be put into, I suppose, first-class condition or something like that, pretty, pretty good condition, standard condition. or something like that, pretty, pretty good condition, standard condition. Acceptable condition, whatever you want to call it. That being the case, I question your statement that you need the tax exemption to bring the property up to standard. It seems to me that what you're really asking for is that the taxpayers of Reinbeck are giving you the exemption subsidize the $8 million purchase price. Because if the property is worth $8 million, and I accept that, willing seller, willing buyer, you negotiated a deal, it's worth $8 million with an assumed tax exemption, 100% tax exemption of, let's say, 40 years, and you don't get that exemption, it's going to be worth less. And if you don't get an exemption, let's say that they value, to pick a number out of the air, it's not $8 million, but it's $7,500,000, just as an example. We give you the exemption, it seems to me, if I'm right so far, that you're really asking the taxpayers to subsidize the price. And by the way, it's not the hospital, it's Nuance. They own the property now, it's not good old Reinbeck or Northern Dutchess Hospital. So, would you address that, please?
Yeah, to first talk about where the proceeds would go. The property is owned by an HDFC, which is Housing Development Fund Corporation. For them to sell the property, which the seller is working on currently, they have to get state AG approval. Those funds are governed by the state AG. The state AG demands or determines where those funds go, so...
Is HFC a Nuance-controlled entity?
No, it's a housing, it's a...
HDFC.
HDFC. It's under Article 11 of the New York State Housing Private Finance Laws. And so, the funds that are, the proceeds that they would get would have to be agreed by the state AG on what they use them for. It couldn't just go as a distribution to the hospital for them, however you guys are, I don't know, I don't know how their economics work, but it wouldn't go to, I guess, Nuance?
Nuance.
Nuance, the, I guess, corporate owner of the hospital.
So the hospital, I mean, the hospital does control the entity, the owner entity, the current owner entity?
Is that, and that's HDFC?
In, right, in that it appoints the director. So local folks are on that hospital?
And then they're working towards, so to speak.
Right.
And then, so to get back to the other point that you made about, you know, the purchase price, our debt and equity that we're bringing into the deal. Obviously, the purchase price was, you know, an open transaction, and that's what the market was set, and that's what we were willing to pay based on the tax exemption staying in place. Our equity has some return requirements, as you see in the paperwork that we provided to you guys. We're putting in over $3 million ourselves into the property.
I haven't seen any paperwork like that.
Sure. We sent it to you guys, I think you got it?
If I should have seen it, and I haven't, and I haven't, I apologize, but I don't recall.
Did anybody else want to copy? Okay, I think it's already put.
When was this sent? December 28?
It stated December 28. I'm certain I didn't get that. Okay, I cancel that.
So as you guys can see in here, we've provided you guys a source and use on the property, you know, what kind of debt we can achieve at the property, and what equity we're bringing into the property. We also provided you operating pro forma. As you can see in the exhibits, we're putting in close to $3 million of our own money through a loan from the parent company, and we're expecting to derive a small amount of cash for the payback of that loan. On top of that, we have to pay debt service to our first mortgage holder. And the reason that we need the debt to be what it is, and if we don't have the tax exemption in place, and debt would shrink, we're not going to be able to do the rehab that's needed to keep this property intact.
Are you going to keep the rents the same?
The rents are done by HUD. The tenant rents are 30% of their income, and no tenants will see an increase in their income.
Well, but, but, but another my question, which has been troubling me ever since November 26, I think it was, when you were here last time, is if the property is worth $8 million with the tax exemption, and you don't get it, it's worth some amount less. My guess is it would be a few hundred thousand dollars, although, of course, a calculation could be made. Why isn't that differential, were we to give you the exemption you asked for, a matter of the town of Reinbeck taxed, village, village, I guess it is, taxpayers subsidizing that purchase price? And why should the taxpayers do that?
You know, I don't think I would think about it that way, because the purchase price was determined between willing seller, willing buyer, and actually, the hospital accepted a not-for-profit with, you know, whatever their assumptions were. They could have sold it for more, I think, but then, you know, if they would have sold it for more, presumably, it would have been assuming taxes. But that's a different model and a different goal. So if you say to the hospital, sell it to the highest bidder, make the most money, pay us taxes, we don't care whether this property continues to be low income and whether it's renovated, then that's a, you know, that's a policy decision. But what this not-for-profit, you know, wants to buy the property for is to preserve the existing situation, to preserve the property, to renovate it so that the people who are able to stay there right now are able to stay there, at the, at the income level that they're able to serve. And that's the goal of the property, that's what the not-for-profit that's trying to buy the property wants to do.
Well, I guess what you're saying, Chris, is that the tax exemption is absolutely crucial to the continued operation of Wells Manor in its present fashion as affordable housing. Now, how can you, what can you show me to satisfy that?
It's not affordable housing, it's Section 8 housing, elderly people.
Okay, understood, yeah.
So, you know, that's a critical point, because it is a lower level than, you know, 80%.
But the question remains, it's the same question.
So, maybe the performance that you have in front of you, if you can slip those over to me, John, can you go and through that? Because I think that's what you're asking, right?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, so if you want to open up the packet to exhibit, let's see here, exhibit C, tab C?
I'm sorry, was that C?
Uh, I'm sorry. Exhibit 3, I'm sorry.
3.
Where is that, John? Do you have a page number?
Tab number 3, Source and Use halfway through.
Yeah, about halfway through.
Oh, okay.
Tab 3?
I'm getting there. Sources and uses, yeah.
So this is a simple source and use on the property. We're expecting to get a grace note, Fannie Mae loan, first mortgage holder, 7.215 million. With that, we're also, the parent company, we're loaning, loaning to the property, the property owner, 2.93 million. So for a total sources of 10.145 million. As you can see here, our acquisition price is 8 million. Our year-one rehab scope is 1.5 million. That's 20,000 per door in hard costs. And then there's closing costs and reserves that we get set up for the property on an ongoing basis, and those are initial deposits.
So why, why isn't this a valid way of looking at whether or not it's fair? But I mean, from, from an economic point of view, if we don't give you the tax exemption, and the acquisition purchase price goes down by a few hundred thousand dollars...
Can I just stop you? The acquisition purchase price is not an issue. There is a purchase contract, it's already been decided. That is the purchase contract. They don't settle for this, but it was contingent on this.
Well, I can hear that from somebody besides the buyer. You're, you're saying that...
So if we fall out of contract, right? My group falls out of contract with the current ownership. They'll probably take it back out to the market, and maybe a for-profit market rate buyer buys the property. There's 18 months left on the half contract. At that time, they can convert the property to market rate. Those tenants that are there, 75 families, elderly families that live there now, won't be living there in future. You have market rate units renting for a lot more than what they do. I know how high expensive rents are here already.
What are the rents currently, like the rent rate?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Taking that as a given, and I am not questioning your good faith or your veracity at all. Taking that as a given, you're asking us to make an enormously important policy decision. And I don't know how we go back, do we?
Can I say, I think they're asking us to continue letting the property be used for Section 8 housing for the elderly. I think that if I'm seeing...
Nobody goes beyond that. They're saying if we don't give them the exemption, it won't be. That's a huge jump.
If the, if the current owner decides this, they'll settle.
Right, I mean, the current owner could say, forget it, we can take it out to the... We don't know what the current owner would say, but we know that it could be a possibility that another non-for-profit will not buy it, and we will not have Section 8 housing for the elderly, which I think is a good thing for the community.
Can I ask, were for-profit developers invited to bid?
Yes.
Do you have any idea what the breakdown was between for-profit and...
I know this was nationally marketed by a group called Marcus and Milchek out of Southfield, Michigan. I can put you guys in touch with them, if you want to ask how many people stayed on the property and things of that nature. I'm sure they'd need more, willing to work with you guys in this phase out.
Just, just so you understand, I mean, if the property is purchased and continues as Section 8, the owner of the property would be entitled to a, an exemption.
Yes.
Or a different provision, but that's a lot of differences. I believe that we're committing ourselves to giving you that exemption for 40 years, provided that you continue to use the property as Section 8 housing, is that correct?
That's correct, and, you know, we, you know, have no problem tying the exemption to the half contract that's in place. So if the half contract were to go away, or our company were to do something that defaults the half contract, then the exemption would go away.
They're asking for the exemption so that they can remain Section 8 housing for elderly?
Yeah, but the assumption is that if we don't give them the exemption, it will all change, and widows and orphans will be evicted.
Yeah.
And it's a big jump and a lot of money.
But it's already tax exempt.
I at least need to have comfort that that's a realistic...
Fair enough. Warren, you said that aside from, if it's a Section 8 housing, they are entitled to tax...
They would be entitled to the exemption. They don't get a guaranteed 40-year exemption, they get the exemption.
Do they get a year by year?
It's a year by year, I believe you have to...
Do you have to reapply for your, whenever that, I guess, whenever the assessors ask you to?
Yeah.
We're doing exemptions on...
Although this property has a long-term exemption for...
Yeah, it expires a year and a half, I think a few more years, I don't know, 40 years.
2025, I think.
Yeah, something like that. Under what section of the law is that current?
That was under the section that specifically related to the HUD mortgage that's in place now.
Okay.
So, again, because those mortgages are no longer being made that way, HUD, a long time ago, said, go out to the market and get your mortgage, and we'll still give you the Section 8 contract, but you go find financing. So it's a different model.
So what do we do now? What's our next step?
Well, I think you have to discuss it internally. One, one last question, can I, if you don't mind?
Please.
If, if the town were to grant a 20-year exemption or a 30-year exemption, so how would that impact the viability of the property?
So as you've seen in the packets I was sent to you, we need a minimum of a 30-year exemption for our financing to get max leverage financing. And that financing is predicated on the rehab that we're doing at the property.
Is this, is this a 75, how many units there are?
75.
75. So you're doing about 20, you're doing 20,000 rehab per unit?
Yeah.
It's not a ton of money. What is that, new windows, new painting?
I was up there today with my GC, so all-new roofs, windows, siding. We just found out that the siding, underneath the siding, the sheathing is deteriorating more than we thought, so we have to do all-new siding. We're going to do all-new kitchens, baths, there's five boilers at the property that we're going to replace and bring in high efficiency boilers. And then parking lot and sidewalk work as well.
For a million five?
Yeah.
I think you also mentioned in the telephone conference, that was you on the phone on the 6th, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Yes.
I think you also mentioned something about the grounds beyond the parking lots.
Yeah, so some of the residents, what the residents would like there is additional benches. We're putting Wi-Fi throughout the property.
Right, we must do that as well.
You know, fixing up their garden. Most of the tenants, as you know, are elderly and can't bend down to the ground.
And they don't want pesticides there anymore?
Yeah, and so we were talking about just today how to raise the garden beds up to three feet so it's easier and more accessible for the tenants there.
Okay, thank you. Do we have more questions, or Warren, what's our next step?
Well, you have to make a decision. I think we're having, we're having a meeting Friday. Perhaps we can take that time to discuss it.
We're having an attorney-client meeting on Friday to discuss...
Do you have objection if we discuss it in an attorney-client meeting? We won't make any decisions at that meeting? Or we can have, we can make the meeting on Friday, a special meeting, and go into an attorney-client session?
No, I think we need an internal meeting first, and then if you want to have a public meeting.
Is this appropriate for attorney-client?
Got to make sure I understand it.
So you can ask, talk about it and ask questions of the, in the attorney-client session. No, there'll be no decisions made or anything like that. We only have four members. And then we can come back and either do it in an executive session or in another town, next town.
It's not appropriate for executive session.
Sort of contractual, aren't we agreeing?
It's not a...
We are entering into an agreement, so it's a contractual.
So if you discuss it in an attorney-client, though, I mean, is there, then what would the best opportunity to actually vote it, because you have to vote?
We'd have to vote on another next town board meeting.
Yeah, we have to vote on it.
Two weeks.
When is our next town board meeting, Jim?
Two weeks from yesterday. 13. Do we have to have a public hearing about this at all?
No.
So we can schedule a special one?
No, you can decide it anytime you want. When is the next town board meeting?
Two weeks from yesterday.
20, 23?
24, if that's where.
I have a very important Hyde Park meeting, so I have to be out of here by 7:00, so. Much more important.
Much more.
Tonight?
No, on that, on that night.
Oh, okay, all right.
You'll vote on it, but it'll be a resolution on the 24th?
24. So just get in touch in the meantime.
I'm sorry.
Get in touch in the meantime if you have other questions.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does everybody have a copy of this?
This is the first time I've seen it.
Everybody had this one.
John, can you put on our agenda for the 24th, a resolution for the Wells Manor request for tax exemption from the town of Reinbeck?
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Good night.
Okey-dokey. Anything else here for Warren? You know, just one thing briefly while you're here, Warren. The village has circulated a draft zoning law to create a hospital and medical overlay district. And I gave it to the board, I think I sent it to you, and on planner. I just want to discuss with you guys, you know, so that we can have a good overview of it. Can we let Jim work on it to give us some professional input on what he thinks? And we could give that to the mayor and the trustees.
Yes. Do you have any, where are they in the process?
I have no idea. Do they just have... I think it's just a draft law. I don't know who drafted it, I don't know if they have a planner working on it. But since we, zoning is so important to the town, and keep preserving the village and keeping the village as our focus, this is important for us.
It's very appropriate for the, for the town to weigh in on the zoning, since it had such a significant impact on the, on the town as well as the village.
Okay. Or another thing while you're here, is that we got a request from Warren Smith and Kathy Hammer, who are lead right now on our Historic Preservation Committee. Chauncey, you're liaison.
Yes.
And you got the email as well. They want to know if we're comfortable, they would like to ask us if they can have non-town members on the committee, especially non-town residents with expertise. For instance, Bill Jeffway is, is a resident of Minewin, and he is on the Kelly Historic.
I'm all for it for two reasons. The expertise that perhaps we can't get in each instance from within the town, and also it'll bring a degree of objectivity that we otherwise might not have. I think it's fine.
Yeah, it's a, it's not a statutory board, it's an advisory committee. I think they're having trouble finding an archaeologist that's a town resident. And there are some people with a lot, very high-end and renowned historic preservation work who live in Clinton, and, do you see any issue with that?
You, you can, it's only an advisory committee. If it were a standing committee, we could not do that without special legislation.
Standing committees have to be written out.
Right, you know, regular, yeah, committees that have a function, some exercise some degree of discretion, like Conservation Advisory Council, something like that. But I would like to see if they can bring people to the board that have some geographical connection to the Reinbeck area.
Well, they would be in a budding towns or have businesses here. Bill Jeffway is, what is he, County Historical Society, so... Okay.
If we can't find people within the town to fill those.
Well, it's a pretty specific resolution that you wrote, and we need specific expertise. So, you know, our town historian is on it, I mean, that's all. Anything else on here that anybody thinks Warren needs to? I think we're okay.
Okay.
Warren, thanks for coming.
You don't want to weigh in on the winch?
Don't break the legs.
Excellent.
I'm going to, so we will, we're meeting on Friday, an attorney-client, to just go over... I'm going to, so we will, we're meeting on Friday, an attorney-client, to just go over, um, a couple of things and we'll discuss the Wells Manor, Chauncey, if there's any, and we'll know what we have to do after that. I'm just gonna pick up the, um, meeting where we left off.
Well, wow, we could do a wood chipper next.
I'm gonna go with the resolutions as we have and I'll just...
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Resolution 2020-064, preliminary accounts payable abstracts, vouchers 188 through 257. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Good, good.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? Um, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Uh, resolution 2020-065, I'll make a motions for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, um, 258 through 277. May I have a second? Thanks, Josh. Thanks, Warren. Goodbye.
Goodbye.
Any questions or discussions? There are two abstracts, 'cause some are 2019 and some are 2020. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Um, I'll skip here. I'll go to resolution 2020-067 for our highway department purchase of a wood chipper. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Bob, I gotta thank you for your incredibly thorough paperwork and file folder on this. We're gonna get spoiled...
Is it, is it spoiled?
...by somebody who shall rename nameless with the initials of K. K., who had red hair and was a fire, who was a highway superintendent here. He didn't mention a name. Wow, talk about paperwork, yeah. If you want, everyone, I...
What is the commissioning of the new, uh, wood chipper? Mars, is, what is the commissioning? Is there a break-in procedure or anything?
Why, hopefully.
All right. Thanks for coming, Lena.
They've got special labels on them.
Yeah, it is.
That's awesome.
Okay. All right, so congratulations on the new chipper and the paperwork quality, I gotta say. Um, resolution 2020-066, CAB appointment of Gabriella Baker.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Josh. Is there any discussion?
Architects, I'm totally...
Is she an architect?
Yeah, she is. She's a...
I did, I, I, I forgot what, yeah. And we had a resignation too.
Yes, we had a...
Over, over... The retirement, um, great. And the CAB has met her and they're all okey-dokey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Um, resolution 2020-068, Recreation Program Fee Schedule. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? Thank you, Chauncey.
I'd like to suggest that we table this.
Table? Okay, well, all right.
Well, so we can reconsider. I mean, there are a bunch of things in here that are...
Well, yeah, first...
Questions.
Okay, we're asking to subsidize recreation, which may be a good thing, but we're losing money on this, so where are we going to get the money? And have the residents who, who asked us to do this started a nonprofit to... And if we were to do it, I would not be in favor of subsidizing for non-residents using taxpayer money.
It would be, and we haven't done the financial analysis.
Okay, so let's table it until we have a more thorough financial analysis. This is for a reduction of camp fees for certain people. Okay, thanks. We'll table resolution, um, five. Okay, um, resolution 2020-069, Summer Recreation Hires. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Ed, uh, any discussion on this? This is our very excellent, um, maintenance person and a new aquatics director. Uh, I guess it was our same aquatics director.
Same guy, yeah.
Both returns.
These are both returns.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Uh, resolution 2020-070, Improving Our Pool Chemical Supply.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Table? Uh, well, we haven't brought it to the floor yet. I'm fine tabling it if everybody wants, why, Ed?
There's no, there's no listing of the price for the winner here.
Then let's table it. And you'll follow up on that?
I will.
Thank you. Um, resolution 2020-071, Root Portal Access Contract. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2020-072, Expanding Monthly Hours of CAB clerk. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Um, we are expanding the hours from two and a half hour, from two and a half hours a week to, what did we say? 20 hours a month to help support the CAB so that they can get the information they need to have some oversight. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I have a motion here, a resolution here that I'd like to bring up from the floor before we, uh, interview business, before I go to the other discussion items. Thank you. It's, uh, resolution, I'll make a motion for resolution 2020-073, An Amendment to the Town Employment and Practices Compliance Manual. May I have a second?
Second.
Was that Chauncey? Okay, thank you. Um, it's really just to, uh, say that we will not reimburse sales... We will only pay sales tax on meals, not on hotels when you're traveling. And, um, you need receipts for everything. And, um, we'll approve hotels for our hotel rate around what is approved or offered by a specific event. And also for traveling to events in New York City, that we will only reimburse the cost of a round-trip train ticket, which is less than driving. And driving for reimbursement has to be, uh, if someone wants mileage, they have to get prior town board, um, approval. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, thank you. We've talked about, uh, had Chris Shale, Jim Levy is going to review. Historic structures is okay. Two other things I have is on the cultural landscape, Cultural Landscape Foundation and the What's Out There Weekend. Um, I'll tell you where I am and I wanna know where you guys are. It's an $86,000 project. I am happy to support contributing them the startup money, which is $25,000 for the naming rights of Reinbeck and the Hudson Valley region. But I do not wanna be responsible for raising any of the funds or guaranteeing the project. If they go through with the, if they accept the money and give us the naming rights, um, I would want to enter a contract that said if they didn't get it done within X amount of time, they return the money to us and they're responsible for raising the money. That's where I am. I just need to know if you guys wanna, wanna do this, not do it, or what, what you think. And I have...
I'm on the fence. And, uh, I think my view on it a little bit is this, at the end of the day, not to oversimplify it, if it's a straight tourism degenerate, is it required? Uh, if it's required, what is the benefit from it? You know, is this a net return that we can see of X hires in? I'm not sure this...
I don't, I'm not sure there is that. It's a little bit of marquee. I don't know how many hits there are. It's something our Chamber of Commerce could use. It's something that our business people could potentially use in marketing themselves. It's something that could potentially be used, you know, in the wedding industry or agro-tourism. It's not concrete and it's not a project that we had said we wanted to do. So I just have to give them an answer, but I'm, I'm with you.
I did mention this at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. I had almost no feedback. Somebody said, oh, it's nice.
What, did you chamber? Chamber? Are you chamber?
No. I spoke at the Chamber of Commerce.
Do you guys feel shook, on the cool side of this?
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
All right, so should we say we're not going to go forward with it?
I don't think we need it.
Okay, I'm going to tell the Cultural Landscape Foundation that we, we don't wanna contribute.
Tourism is one of our problems. We need it.
Fair enough. If anybody feels really strongly about this, come and let us know. Um, okay, that, that's good. Thank you. Um, another thing is that, uh, last year, we had this really great project by Thomas Biker, uh, Eagle Scout. He redid all of our Reinbeck signs. We're missing one. Um, he did four, but we really should have five. We're missing one on Route 9, south of, right around Vandenberg Cove, which is where Reinbeck becomes Hyde Park. We have it on Route 9G, we have it on 308 on both sides, and we have it on 9. And, uh, we need one more sign. Um, it would cost us about $1,000 to get what, what, exactly what we had. And I wanted to ask you guys for the money, if you'd be willing to spend it. Uh, the same sign company would do it. I'm hoping, uh, that the fa, the highway department would put it in for us and then we'd have Welcome to Reinbeck at every ingress.
And that's...
So that's a yes? I'll, I'll do a...
We gotta get permission first.
What?
We gotta get permission first from the state.
Okay, will you help me with that?
I will.
And I'll put this on as a resolution for our next... Tony, will you remind me that I need a resolution for this?
The border is right where the Four, Four Lanes go.
Yeah.
Well, a little south, yeah. Yeah, I think there was one there years ago and the city came in there and did a project and built that whole area in, I think, as sign was taken down then.
All right, so we'll work on that. But it would, you know, it looks so great. It's Thomas Biker, he did such a great job and we can get the exact same thing made, so thank you.
Yeah, I think they're made of wood, not wood, so it doesn't last that long.
Let's hope. Um, I think that's all I have. Does anybody else have any?
Your number three under discussion items?
Jim Levy to review village hospital.
We did that.
We decided on that.
Oh, okay, I thought you, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, it is. I thought you were going to review it here. Sorry.
No.
Okay.
I mean, he hasn't, we have to tell him how to review it. Um, anybody else have anything?
I just have to get back to the trails meeting and talk to you about what, is, is it an RFP that's next? Or is it, it's just I need to...
So, I mean, I, I think we put money in the budget and what we need is a plan for what these trails are going to be.
They have that, that's all.
So then we either need to go out to bid or we need to select a vendor. I think we can do that because it's professional services.
That's what I thought as well.
Yeah, and we can talk to Warren about that. And we are working with the Le Berge Group now on court consolidation and they're one of the leaders of this kind of thing.
Right, that's what I thought.
So, um, um, I got an email from...
But they're really quite...
Mark Dixon.
They're very, really quite organized now.
Right.
I'll feed the fire with this. Mark has a complete, this is everything we want, which is...
And when are you going away?
I'm going away tonight, actually.
So they asked to meet with me this week or next week. I'll schedule a meeting with them.
Because the last time Chauncey and I met with them, we, we couched a lot of things that we need to sort of get the marching orders, like figure out what the next steps were.
I think the next steps is to find out how we, you know, like to get a, um, engineering and planning company involved to help get us grant money to do this.
That's exactly what we said, but we didn't know if there had to be this RFP component.
Warren can answer that for us and we might be able to just have the Le Berge Group do it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm very comfortable with that and I've spoken with them. I have to talk, look, with your permission, maybe Chauncey will meet with them with me. I just got an email and we'll try and get it...
Yeah, 'cause they're just like, you know, Mark's retired now, he's like really on this. So there's plans, getting views, there's meetings, there's general...
Did he rename the committee?
I can't remember.
Yeah, he renamed it. My God, I thought we named committees, but right on. Yeah, they seem, um, champing at the bit.
I guess they are.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other public comments or non-agenda items? Anything else for the highway department? Uh, I wanna say thank you to your working foreman during the last storm for going in on his own volition and checking roads from 1:00 in the morning until 6:00 or 7:00. Guys seem like you're clipping along nicely there.
I said thank you.
Nice, thank you. Anybody else?
See, I, we do have some thing down at the highway garage. Uh, Josh, you've been looking into it.
Josh said, so there's a moisture condition which is existing in the upper storage level that is damaging...
Our, our records.
It's not there yet, but it will be. So the, we, I, I did an inspection down there. There's a bunch of insulation's fallen down. So the long and short is I have to put together a basic scope. I told Bob I'd put together a basic scope of what it is and we gotta figure out what the cost is. Someone's gotta put in the installation back up that's fallen down because hot air's going down, it's condensing, it's coming back down.
Should we get it sprayed or...
I, I don't know. I have to do a scan, do the research and then, um...
Our resident town board architect engineer, love it. Thank you, Josh. And P.S., the lighting examples that you sent to us?
Yeah, that one, I forgot.
We love it. I'll send you guys, I'll put pictures. There are reproductions of additional lighting that we can put in the clerk's office and my office in the hallway that will have LED light bulbs?
Yes.
Uh, and we can get rid of the fluorescent lights and they're a much better temperature. So, um, anything else? Thank you all for watching. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, uh, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody. Thank you.